Good evening, everyone. We'd like to start the meeting now. It officially started at 6:00 PM and went into closed session. So now I would ask you all to join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, for which it stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in law.
Thank you for being here tonight. Tonight, we are recognizing several outstanding Parkway teachers and nurses. So first, I'd like to invite Dr. Amy Gurkenkoets, Talent Development Coordinator, to recognize the Parkway's newest Board Certified Teachers.
Good evening, Dr. Marty, President Todd, Vice President Hopper, Ms. Stover, and members of the Board. As the Talent Development Coordinators, with great pleasure and pride that I come here tonight to celebrate six more talented Parkway educators that have earned National Board Education status, bringing our district total up to 64 nationally Board Certified Educators. As you know, National Board Certification is an advanced teaching credential. It complements, but does not replace, a teacher's state license. National Board Certification is achieved upon successful completion of a voluntary assessment program designed to recognize effective and accomplished teachers who meet high standards based on what teachers should know and be able to do. Certification consists of four components: content knowledge, differentiation in instruction, teaching practice and learning environment, and effective and reflective practitioner. Throughout the process, educators are able to apply what they're learning to their practice and connect with other teachers pursuing certification. As a district, we support educators throughout their journey with a scholarship and partner each candidate with a current Parkway National Board Certified Educator to serve as mentor. National Board spent 2014 through 2018 revising the process, and this group represents just the second class to graduate with the new, even more rigorous requirements. We have another 25 educators at different places in their journey, collecting data, videotaping lessons, measuring impact, and adjusting instruction to be able to join the ranks of 58 previous teachers to have successfully walked this path. To put this in perspective, only 1,091 teachers have achieved National Board Certification in the entire state of Missouri, and just under 126,000 teachers nationwide, representing less than 3% of educators, have achieved this status. Tonight, we celebrate our newest members of this very elite group. Please join me in congratulating the following educators. And finally, Kathleen Schweiss. Congratulations again to our newest Board Certified Educators.
Next, please welcome Dr. Robin Wallen, Director of Health Services.
Good evening, President Todd, Vice President Hopper, members of the Board, Dr. Marty and Mrs. Stover. It's my sincere pleasure to present to you tonight three of our most recent nationally certified school nurses: Lynn DeGier from Claymont Elementary, who was not able to be with us this evening, Jennifer Baker from Riverbend, and Kimberly Webb from Shenandoah Valley Elementary. I'm so proud of these three compassionate, caring, and skilled nursing professionals who support student health and achievement every day in our schools. We currently have 20 Parkway nurses who have earned the National School Nurse Certification credential. Current and former Parkway nurses make up 28% of the nationally certified school nurses in Missouri, and we have more certified school nurses than any other school district in the state. This makes me really proud, and it's something to celebrate. The NCSN credential is recognized as the only nationally accredited credential that validates the specialized knowledge and expertise of the school nurse. National Certification means that the school nurse has invested time and effort to demonstrate her expertise in school nursing. This accomplishment recognizes their professional commitment to lifelong learning and quality care. I'm grateful that these nurses have taken the extra step to demonstrate their commitment by providing the best possible care for our students and school community. Earlier this evening, you had the opportunity to hear from the Parkway Nurses Association and learn of the various contributions that our school nurses are making to our district. Our nurses are a truly remarkable group and critical to the success of our district. So on behalf of our nursing group, I thank you for your ongoing support of our Health Services Program and our committed nurses. And right now, I would like to congratulate Jennifer Baker from Riverbend. And Kim Webb from Shenandoah Valley. Thank you so much.
Thanks once again to all of our teachers present and our nurses. We greatly appreciate everything you do for our students and staff every day. Right now, we'll take a quick break, and we'll resume the meeting shortly. Ready to resume? All right, so we're ready to resume, and we've lost a few people. We promise we'll keep things moving. Next on the agenda is additions, corrections, and modifications to the agenda. 6.01, addition to Agenda Item 10.29, acceptance of gifts from the public technology. 6.02, addendum to Agenda Item 10.05, approval of personnel items. Next up is citizen statements. For the citizen statement sheet, I will ask anyone who signed up to approach the podium. And I typically read this, and that is, "We provide an opportunity at each meeting for citizen comment in an effort to maintain an open and respectful dialogue with our community. Due to privacy laws protecting student and employee information, no personally identifiable information may be shared. Also due to time constraints and the need to complete the primary responsibilities of our meeting agenda, we cannot respond during the meeting, so you will receive a response from us in writing. We are always available to have an open dialogue outside of Board meetings and can be reached by email or telephone using our contact information on the Parkway website." So I have only one tonight, and that is Paul Starling. Hi.
On December 11, 2019, I filed a work harassment grievance against my direct supervisor and followed the proper guidelines for this procedure. Our contract states all harassment grievances go directly to Chief of Human Resources or Director of Human Resources, and must be addressed promptly. After reaching out to HR on January 2, the Director of Human Resources responds on January 6 for the first time, and his response was, "It's in process." Parkway has a zero-tolerance policy. I fear any retaliation towards me because I have presented this issue up to you guys. I thank you for your time. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next, may I have a motion and a second to approve the agenda for the regular meeting of the Board of Education as scheduled for January 15, 2020?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries 7-0. Next, I would like to invite Amy Joyce to introduce several new administrators.
Thank you, President Todd. Good evening, Vice President Hopper, members of the Board, Dr. Marty, and Mrs. Stover. It's not very often that someone gets to introduce their successor. This evening, I have the privilege to present to the Board of Education Dr. Michael Bogus, who has been named the new Chief Human Resources Officer for the Parkway School District effective July 1. Dr. Bogus has served as an administrator in Parkway since 2001, assigned to Central Middle School as an Assistant Principal and Head Principal. Prior to Parkway, Mike began his career in the Kirkwood School District as a science teacher. Dr. Bogus is a lifelong Parkway student, alumnus, and educator. He has demonstrated a consistent commitment to Parkway's mission and goals by fully embracing Parkway's traditions, complemented with a strong vision for our future. His vast service and dedication to the Parkway community were recognized with a pillar of Parkway in 2014. Dr. Bogus has served and led many school and district initiatives, including work with teacher negotiations, the benefits committee, and collaboration on many hiring teams. I'm thrilled that Mike will be at the helm of Human Resources next school year. I am confident that through his leadership, the district will continue to attract and retain a high-quality workforce. Please join me in congratulating Dr. Michael Bogus, the new Chief Human Resources Officer.
I thought I would cry, but I did so good.
I just want to say thank you. What an honor it's been for me to be building principal here and in this building for the last 19 years, and I look forward to the new journey in my career in serving Parkway. And so I just want to say thank you again, and I look forward to the transition. Amy is still with us for the next four months, and I look forward to that transition time to learn and grow, and then to start July 1. Thank you.
Thank you.
And if I may, I would like to actually turn it over to Phil Rieguski, my partner, to introduce the new Director of Human Resources. Mr. Rieguski?
Thank you. Yep, come on up. Absolutely. Thank you, Amy. I too am pleased to announce my successor. This is a very unique opportunity for me, and I'm thrilled to announce that Dr. Kim Cohen will be the new Director of Human Resources going forward. Dr. Cohen, you all know a lot of this already, but is well-known in Parkway and across the region as an experienced, successful administrator. She's currently the principal at McKelvey, where she's been for the past 12 years. She began her career as an elementary teacher, followed by a middle school counselor in the Rockwood School District. Dr. Cohen's service to McKelvey community is remarkable. Under her leadership, you're aware of this if you've ever driven by the school, McKelvey was named National School of Character, National Blue Ribbon School, and a National Green Ribbon School. McKelvey Elementary is consistently recognized as one of the top-performing schools in the state of Missouri. Dr. Cohen has collaborated on many district committees and initiatives, including curriculum, personalized learning, hiring teams, new administrator training, and human resource training program. I have every confidence that Dr. Cohen will continue to set standards of excellence for the Parkway workforce while maintaining a positive climate and culture within our organization. Please join me in congratulating Dr. Kimberly Cohen, Parkway's new Director of Human Resources.
If I could ditto what Mike said, I think he said it very well. I've had the honor and the privilege of serving the McKelvey community for the past 12 years and really working to meet mission and vision. I'm excited to branch into this role and transfer that over. We've had an amazing opportunity for the past year and a half to study directly under Amy and Phil and to meet so many others in the profession, and it's been wonderful. I thank you so sincerely for this opportunity.
The next regular Board meeting will take place on Wednesday, February 19, 2020, beginning at 7:00 PM here at Central Middle School. Board candidate filing continues during regular business hours through January 21, 2020 at 5:00 PM. The terms of Kristi Klein-Davis, Deborah Hopper, and Jeff Todd expire in April 2020. In order of filings, candidates who have filed are Jeff Todd, Deborah Hopper, and Kristi Klein-Davis. The spring election will be held on April 7, 2020. At this time, we will entertain Board Liaison Reports.
All right, since the last Board meeting, we did have a Goal One Subcommittee meeting. I was with Sam and Debbie on that meeting, and updated a number of topics, from report cards to diversity survey, and then personalized learning, and made the comment that now that we're in 2020, next year's personalized learning year. This coming school year, but school year 2021, 2022. It came up pretty fast, even for me, just being on the Board a short time. It seemed so far away, but it is almost upon us. And then I had a family friend that moved into the Sorrento Springs catchment area, and I didn't prompt her at all. I just asked her, so you have a kindergartner in there, what's your opinion of the program coming up? And she's really excited about it. She's glad to be part of the school, excited to see the changes coming, and she's also a partial educator too, so she kind of understands what we're trying to do with Sorrento Springs, not just with that school, but then hopefully bring it out to all of Parkway. So it was kind of a nice little, things are going well over there. So it was a nice little prompt. And then I'll actually, for the first time, give a sports update. Since the last school board meeting, I actually had a chance to get out to a couple of sports I haven't gotten out to at the Parkway level, and I made it to a Parkway West hockey game. It was fun to see. I was glad to see that two females were on the team, too. They played real hard, but I'll say the Fox team was pretty dang good, so it turned out the way we wanted it to. And then I actually got a chance, I have never been a big wrestling fan, didn't fully understand the sport, made it out to the Parkway West/Parkway South meet. I did not realize they had walk-up songs with Parkway West running into Metallica blaring over the PA system. And then I think of Rob Johansson, one of the parents there, he gave me a great education on the scoring process. So Parkway West, to give you those final scores, Parkway West won the boys varsity, they won the boys JV, but I'll say the Parkway South did win the girls competition. So it was fun, I learned a lot.
Okay, so I think I need to get to a Parkway West wrestling meet, because that is also a sport I've never gone to. Since the last meeting, I've mainly attended events as mom, as opposed to as school board member. Went to a sixth-grade band concert, and I am always so impressed. These kids start these band instruments in August, you go to the concert in December, and at least at West Middle, the teachers will actually play you a recording of how they sounded on the first day that they actually put their mouths onto their instruments. And the amount of growth is astounding, and it makes me appreciate those teachers even more because that's a lot of untrained sound coming out of those instruments. But by the time they get to those December concerts, they're just awesome. I've also been attending Parkway West basketball games because I happen to have a pep band member, and am really enjoying those and seeing the spirit that comes out during those games. So I'm sure I will have more to report next month, but this month was, with the holidays, a little bit light.
I also attended the Goal One Liaison Meeting. Excuse me. Couple of things that Matt didn't mention. Basically, the middle school grading card, grade card itself, will have a mental health component starting next year, and they're working on basically the criteria for determining the mental health scoring on that as well. Craig mentioned the Equity and Diversity Survey, and the results of participants in that survey have been very, very good overall, so we'll get some very good data out of that. Personalized learning, I have a friend whose daughter was wondering if she would be considered one of the staff members in that program, and she was so ecstatic to be part of it. So it appears that the teachers that have been selected are very, very excited. I think Erin is very, very excited. The community is excited about it. Kevin Becker is a great leader in promoting the pursuit of the program and training teachers, et cetera. So that's going to go off very, very well, and as Matt mentioned, it seems like it came all too soon, but that's good. The middle school study basically took place a couple of years ago, I believe. The middle school study basically took place a couple of years ago, I believe, and teachers are working on the alignment of the program with standards and principles and mission. An exciting thing for students this summer, K through eight, they'll be participating with Rockwood students in the Babler Education Center program, which I think is very, very exciting for students in the K-8 STEM program.
So I'll just mention, I've continued to stay engaged with and up to date on what's been happening in the region in regards to early childhood education and efforts to increase universal access to that. I think, as everybody in this room probably knows, that's been broadly identified as a really critical equity issue by groups, including the Ferguson Commission and others. And for the last several years, a lot of groups have been doing a lot of research, academic, community voice, et cetera, into the priorities of community and what are possible solutions to that issue. And it's really exciting that there's a lot of regional momentum on that, and I think we're all hopeful that the region can move forward with a unified voice in a way that honors community voice in that process, and it also uses a strong equity lens towards getting our kids access to those early services that so many need. So more to come on those.
A lot of the school district activity slows down during the winter break, and I know you teachers may have a different perspective, but as a parent of a young kid, that winter break is quite something. But over the break, I did have a couple of experiences. One, like Matt, took in some Parkway Athletics, Parkway North basketball game, and I'm happy to say the Vikings were able to give Ford Zemaldees all they could handle that night. We also, after our last board meeting, had the board administrator holiday gathering, and it's a really great experience, and I only bring it up to sort of amplify that I really enjoy the culture. Everybody, we talk a lot about the district and operations and the performance, but the culture that this district maintains is really something special. The people that work here, the people we interact with, it's just a very good group to interact with, and it's really nice to see people that work well together and do a good job, and all the joy we'll be having.
That's an insight.
Since the last meeting, the other event that I attended was a Parkway Alumni Association Holiday Party, and just to give a shout out to our Alumni Association, they do remarkable efforts here within our district, recognizing a variety of different efforts. The granting dreams applications, I believe, are now open, or they will be opening soon, and that's one of their huge endeavors, is for students to make an application to win a grant or a dollar amount award for an effort that the student is interested in. So I would encourage students to move forward with filing those applications.
And I think there's a trivia night coming up as well, the end of this month. I will just mention that you may have read about it in the news, but last month, or no, this month, there was a vote on the Maryland Heights Lake District, and Parkway was one of the entities that had a vote in that process, and we voted with the majority in not approving the project to move forward in its current plan. And I just wanted to thank Matt for the time that he took to spend a lot of time at the meetings that was going on, that were going on the last few months, and really doing a great job of educating the board and our administrators as to what the project entailed. So thank you very much, Matt.
President Anna, thank you to Patty Bedborough, too. She's back there busy, she's not even listening. Just, I just, Ford, thank you so much for your comments about sports and athletics, because that is an important part of our, Kevin talks about culture. So thanks for getting out and seeing some of those activities. That's really neat. I know people really appreciate that. You probably don't realize it, but coaches and people, parents really appreciate when you're there. I just want to thank the community and parents and everybody who was very cooperative during our struggle to get final exams in, and some of them carried over to the after-holiday, but thank you very much for your patience in that regard. And then I just want to mention, since they're all here tonight, our STEM coordinators, Jennifer, Jen, Stephanie, they're all sitting up there, are going to have STEM Saturdays again, working with Normandy and, what was the other? Crawford County, another rural district. When they had come to the School Board Association Conference, they actually recruited a school district away from the city, away from the region to join. So they're going to be starting out on February 8th, for February Saturday, so I'm just reminding you folks, maybe let the board put in on more of the, oh, you have it already, Nikki has it, but you might want to attend that. It's really enjoyable, and it's a wonderful opportunity for us to relate to other school districts and really get our students and staff working together with others in the region. Very proud of that. Thank you.
Yep, thank you. The Goal One Subcommittee meeting was held on January 7. The Finance Operations Subcommittee meeting will be held on February 18, 2020, at 4:30 PM at the Administrative Center. Next, we have a reasonably healthy list of consent items, so may I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented in the January 15, 2020 board meeting materials?
So moved.
Second.
Is there anything to be pulled to action or closed? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries seven zero. We have no individual action items tonight, but we do have a policy review, so if I could have Patty Bedborough, oh, there she is, join us down here to talk about Section F policies.
Good evening, President Todd, Vice President Hopper, members of the Board of Education, Dr. Marty, and Nikki. What you had in your packet today was our portion of Section F that we have reviewed. Our review team included Ralph Neese, our Director of Facilities, Eric Leeters, our Director of Sustainability and Purchasing, Brian Whittle, our Director of Finance, James Swingle, our Manager of Planning, and myself. These were also reviewed by our board subcommittee, which includes President Todd, Vice President Hopper, and Director Pam Hill. We also had SAT review and make the revisions, suggested revisions necessary, and of course, these all were reviewed by the MSBA. In general, Section F deals with policies related to our district facilities. The policies range from naming of facilities to hiring architects and engineers, construction manager at risk, to processes for bidding and contracting for our construction projects and prevailing wage laws. Over the past few years, we had legislation changes that have changed both prevailing wage limits and what is classified under the bidding threshold requirements for construction projects. In addition, in completion of the review by MSBA, we were able to either blend or eliminate some of our existing policies. While we could have just brought forward the policies that change based on the legislation, we felt it was best to bring forward the entire or near entire group of the F section with the eliminated policies that were no longer applicable. We have some additional review that we need to do on Policy FEE, which is the selection of design-build contractors, and the reason for this is how our energy ESCO companies would fit in to that policy. So policies that you have reviewed include FB for facilities planning, FC for school closings, consolidations and reorganizations, FEB for selection of architect and engineer, FEC for construction management services, FD for construction manager at risk, FEF, which is construction contracts, bidding, and awards, FF for facility names, and FFA for memorials and grounds. The policies that will be deleted include FBB for enrollment projections, FEBA, which was replaced by FEB, and FEGD, service contractors, construction and maintenance service, was replaced and blended in with both FEF and our DJF purchasing policy. Any questions?
I'd just like to say thank you for the collaborative effort that we undertook to review all these policies. I know it took a lot of time, mostly your time, and a lot of other people's in facilities, but we do appreciate the effort that we went to to get through them, so.
You're welcome, and we welcome your feedback as well, and truly, it was a true collaborative effort. We went through the policies literally word by word with this group of administrators to ensure that when we're implementing them, we're going to be able to implement them with integrity and be able to follow the rules. So thank you very much.
Thank you. The next anticipated closed session will be held on Wednesday, February 19, at Central Middle School. Details of the closed session will be posted within 24 hours of the anticipated meeting. Now may I have a motion and a second to adjourn the regular meeting?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries seven zero. Thank you all for your attendance tonight.